It's 7:01 and I will call to order the May 21st meeting of the Essex Planning Board. The hearing on the open space residential subdivision won't start until 7:15. We're going to take care of some planning board business. If anyone in the audience wants to chit chat, if you wouldn't mind taking it out in the hall while we do our business for the first 15 minutes, and then at 7:15, we'll be opening the hearing for the subdivision. Thank you. In addition, as the Zoom announced, this meeting is being recorded and we will be archiving the video of it. So first up, Bill, you have three items for us. We'll see if we can get through them by 7:15.
Okay. First one's Milk Street.
Microphone.
You gotta go on the microphone?
Sorry. The first proposal was Milk Street. It is an agricultural farm. The building is for storage of farm equipment. It was supposed to be on the agenda for the last meeting and it didn't get onto that agenda. That was also a three week span, so we're running out of time. And I have issued the permit for it, so it's really a review for the planning board to approve something that I've already issued, I guess. Any questions?
I'll just, can I remind members that there are two emails with that. One was received back mid-April when the initial request to put it on an agenda came in. And then the second is the updated list of questions still in play. So that's, that's all that's left for that resident.
I just have a question from the email about the public roads on Milk, Milk Street. That this, one resident said it was damaged. Did you get to look at that or did somebody get to look at that?
That's the first I saw of this on this email I got tonight. But I would refer that complaint over to DBW because they're in charge of the roads.
Okay. Does anyone know? Has anyone reported? Found out anything?
That came today.
Okay. Have you had a chance to look at the questions? Is there something you need input from us or are you able to address those?
I can address those. Please let that foot was forwarded to me.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I can address those.
Okay. And you are looking for us to?
Approve the sighting of the building.
Because it's an accessory building and it meets the setbacks?
Yes.
Which is all we're really looking at right now?
Yes.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions about that for Bill? Location of the building? I'll take a motion to approve the sighting of the accessory building.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thanks Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the next permit we have for, again, another sighting of a accessory building is 45 Grove Street. And it is a single-story bond that's 20 by 30. It does meet all the required setbacks for the town bylaws.
I don't think it would push it over, but I noticed that in their impervious calc, they only have buildings. What, what's the driveway surface?
I'm not sure what driveway service is. Crushed stone, just crushed stone driveway. Walk my dog down there.
Do we consider that impervious?
Board members, Joan would like me to remind you to please move your microphones close and use them. Sorry.
Anyway, I don't think that impacts the impervious cover. I was just curious.
But a crushed stone driver would be pervious.
It would be pervious, right?
It won't run off. Any questions for Bill? I'll take a motion to approve the sighting of the accessory building at 45 Grove Street.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the last one is a sighting for a municipal building, which is the town Centennial Grove. It's the proposed bathrooms that are being constructed at Centennial Grove. The foundation was put in and I became aware of it and a permit was filed. So again, we're after the fact on that, but.
Awesome.
That's what we have far as the sighting of those depth building, bathroom building.
So what are we looking at here? Cause it's so far away from the lot lands, you couldn't even see them.
Right, so we have, the town has submitted a couple of overviews instead of a site plan showing the location of the buildings. There are no measurements, but they do show the new pavilion, show the location of the bathroom. And there's some other buildings that show up in the area. They are, it's in the middle of the property. It's not near any property. I don't think it's really worth the financial burden for the town to hire an engineer to go out and survey the lot, to come find the locations when they're not near any setback requirements.
Right, that's something that's so far away from any lot lines that it's kind of irrelevant. So, hmm, right, yes, obscene, okay. I would take a motion to approve the sighting of the bathroom structure at Centennial Grove. Thank you, Simone, second. Shelley, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Peter Epstein.
That's all I have.
Well, that was quick and painful.
It was Bill's paper hitting the microphone.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry.
All right. I'm sorry? Uh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Thanks, Dan. It is 7:08, so we still have seven minutes until we open the hearing, which needs to start on time, not early. So, um, let's take a couple of minutes to re, do we have anything else to discuss?
I have an update.
Okay. So we'll skip to your report?
Yep.
Okay, so this is additional updates from Teresa's report.
The correspondence we've received is in your OSRD folder online and also in the meeting materials. So you've had access, all the correspondence we've received has been about that since the last meeting. With the exception that we did receive another Department of Environmental Protection notification about the Marsh restoration from the Trustees of Reservations. The form has been completed to signify that it was received. But the actual notification, the 80-page document, is also in the meeting materials folder for you to look at at your convenience. It didn't say anything about a public comment period. It just said notification on this one, so I can look a little more closely and see if there is any action to be taken. But I believe other than that form, I don't believe there is. And then the other thing is that I just wanted to bring up, since the, the article at town meeting regarding recordings did not pass, I don't think it's something that needs to be dealt with tonight, but I just want to put this in the board's mind to be thinking about a internal policy for what we're doing and how long we're keeping these recordings. So, so far, we've been keeping the, recording these meetings specifically because of the OSRD interest. And having that available to people and making it available to people will be of benefit throughout the whole process. I might suggest that we consider adding to the minutes or somewhere, or excuse me, the agenda or somewhere, that we will keep these video recordings on file through the end of the OSRD process, whether that goes just through the application process or through to construction if applicable. But to come up with some kind of solid plan so that there's no confusion about how long these will be.
Okay.
Available. Something we can deal with next meeting.
Yeah, we'll put that on the agenda for our meeting on the 4th.
And that's it.
Have you guys had a chance to review the minutes or do you want time now or we can also come back to it at the end?
How much more time do we have?
Hmm?
How much more time do we have?
We only have three minutes, four minutes. We can't start early.
Well then, let's read.
Board members, could we practice for Joan's sake, who's trying so diligently to make sure we have good audio, bring the microphones close in, like, right now, so that she knows that they're there and ready to go? She says you have about six to eight inches that you need.
Is this good, Joan? Am I good now, Joan?
Peter, you need closer.
Joan? Closer? Closer. Good?
We can.
Inferior, but fine.
Can you, can you hear me, Joan?
Yes.
Okay.
You didn't print it out yet?
Hmm?
Want me to go print it?
I don't know.
It was part of your thing.
No, this is just my.
Oh, do you want me to go get it?
Do we need it?
I mean, you can literally, you can just read this.
Right, yeah. Just, all that, we operate under MGL.
Got it right here. Can I just go print it?
Yeah, it's fine, if you, whatever works.
This is, this is for the bylaws.
Hmm?
This one's for the bylaws.
Are you guys still reading minutes? Do you want to vote on them? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the mini, meeting minutes from April 16th.
So moved.
Thank you, Shelley, second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will take a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 7th.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill, second?
Second.
Thank you, Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it is 7:15, so I am going to take a motion to open the public hearing regarding the proposed open space residential development off the end of Essex Park Road. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Beth, second? Thank you, Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So the hearing is, public hearing is open. The planning board operates under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, zoning, and Chapter 39, the open meeting law of Essex in the Town of Essex bylaws, Chapter 6, zoning. To conduct this public hearing effectively and fairly, our process is as follows. After my introductions, the applicant will make an uninterrupted presentation of their project. Second, we will handle questions first from members of the planning board and then members of other boards, departments, and committees in town, and then from members of the public in attendance, and then finally, members of the public online. After all questions have been addressed, we will hear comments in the same order. Members of the planning board will have a chance to speak first, and then members of other boards and departments and committees in town, and then members of the public. I will recognize speakers and set time limits if necessary. If it seems like we're going to go on too long, we're going to ask people to limit what they have to say. In addition, if there is a lot of, a lot of things to discuss, we have the option to continue the public hearing to our next meeting. And we will consider that later on in the evening if it seems like we need more time. We can continue the public hearing as long as necessary to continue collecting public input and/or, if necessary, getting additional information from the applicant on the project. That said, please set your phones off, thank you. Although we may disagree on the issues raised, everyone present at this meeting is expected to be civil to all others present. Those who do not act in a civil manner or engage in rude or disruptive behavior will be asked to leave. We ask that you can find your questions and comments to the project that is the subject of this hearing and to matters that are under the jurisdiction of this board. In addition, we ask that citizens inform themselves of the provisions of the laws under which we operate, particularly the Essex zoning bylaw. The bylaw is available online at essexma.org and hard copies can be provided if requested. Copies of the applicable Massachusetts general laws may be searched online at ma-legislature.gov/laws/generals. The, um, like I said, the sequence of the meeting is going to be, after my introduction, we'll hear from the applicant. And then we also have a technical consultant and our town planner working on this project as well. And we'll hear from them as well at that time. I have, unfortunately for all of you in the room, a fairly detailed introduction, but I think it's important that we lay out what is ahead of us and all the regulations and different criteria that we need to consider as we go through this process. So buckle up, sorry. Tonight, we're here to review and discuss a proposed subdivision project that has been submitted to the planning board for review. The proposed subdivision would be located off the end of Essex Park Road on an 85-acre tract of land comprised of three separate parcels, which is bounded by properties on Turtleback Road, Terra Road, Pond Street, Pine Ridge Road, and Rocky Hill Road. The site is crossed by the Kinder Morgan Gas Line along in Eastman, and there is also a conservation restriction on a 10-acre portion of the tract that abuts properties on Turtleback and Rocky Hill. The subdivision that's proposed is an open space residential development, referred to as an OSRD, which is allowed under Section 6-8 of our zoning bylaw. The premise of an OSRD is that in exchange for permanently protected open space, the development is allowed to have smaller lots than normally allowed by the zoning bylaw. Our bylaw allows for a reduction in lot size from 40,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, along with smaller setback dimensions, in exchange for protecting 50% or more of the tract as open space. I'd like to introduce the people who will be contributing to this evening's hearing. Our town planner Valerie Massard is on the Zoom meeting, as are the applicant, Belt Point. Actually, Belt Point is here in the room with us, Dan. And their engineer, Moran Cameron, who will be on Zoom, will be making their presentation shortly. In addition, the planning board has been working with our own technical consultant for the stage of the process. So James Pearson from Weston and Sampson is also on the Zoom meeting. Weston and Sampson's work in support of the planning board is funded by the applicant per planning board regulations. In addition to the members of the planning board here at the table with me, we have representatives from various town departments and boards who all have a role in the review and the approval process for the OSRD. The Board of Health and the Department of Public Works will both provide necessary feedback on all stages of the design as it affects their areas of oversight. The Board of Health has already witnessed extensive soil testing on site. The Conservation Commission has already reviewed with their own consultant the wetlands delineation of the property and have issued an ORAD, which is an Order of Resource Area Delineation, which means that they have confirmed the wetland and other resources located on the site that the applicant has previously mapped. They and the Open Space Committee will continue to be involved in the next phases of the project. And last but hardly least, both public safety departments, police, and fire will be carefully reviewing aspects of the proposed design to ensure that any and all public safety concerns are properly addressed in any proposed plans. Finally, here at the table with us is the building inspector, who will be interpreting and will assist in interpreting and applying both zoning and subdivision regulations. To provide some background for this whole process, I'm going to review the various standards and regulations which control the subdivision process. First is Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws, which addresses municipal planning and specifically addresses subdivisions in Sections 81K through 81GG. These sections are considered to be the state's subdivision control law and address the processes for and regulations around the creation of subdivisions. Every municipality that wishes to have control over how subdivisions are developed needs to have adopted the subdivision control law. And Essex did this many years ago, and I believe that was in the 1970s. The subdivision control law also requires that municipalities adopt rules and regulations for subdivisions, which are registered with the state. These rules and regulations, which were originally adopted by the planning board after the town accepted the state's subdivision control law, detail the processes for subdivision review and approval, and also outline the required features of a subdivision that the planning board will review for compliance with our standards. So our Town of Essex Rules and Regulations Relative to Subdivision Control is a second document that we use in evaluating a subdivision proposal. Third and finally, there is the Essex, Town of Essex zoning bylaw, which for the purposes of subdividing land, provides the dimensional and density requirements for properties and building lots. Our bylaw also includes in Section 6-8 the provisions and procedures for establishing an OSRD. Some important points about these documents include the following requirements and limitations. Section 81M of MGL, Chapter 41, states that, I quote, "It is the intent of the subdivision control law that any subdivision plan filed with the planning board shall receive the approval of the board if said plan conforms to the recommendation of the Board of Health and to the reasonable rules and regulations of the planning board pertaining to the subdivision of land, provided however that such board may, when appropriate, waive, as provided in Section 81R, such portions of the rules and regulations as deemed advisable." End quote. In simpler language, this means that the planning board is required to approve a subdivision that meets the standards defined in their rules and regulations. A subdivision is an as-of-right process and the planning board's role is to ensure that the proposal meets the town's standards. If a plan is found to meet the town's standards, then it is entitled to approval. In reviewing an application, the planning board is not permitted to impose any requirements on a project that are inconsistent with or not addressed in their rules and regulations. So our evaluation of a proposal needs to be based on these requirements and only these requirements, along with zoning limitations from our bylaw. However, the board also has the right, per Section 81R of MGL, Chapter 41, to waive strict compliance with any of our regulations when, I quote, "Such action is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intent and purposes of the subdivision control law." End quote. Typically, an applicant will request any waivers they want from the board, as will just, and will justify these with an explanation of the benefits for the town. The review process for a conventional subdivision includes two steps. The first is an optional preliminary subdivision plan by the planning board, in which schematic plans are submitted and reviewed for compliance and feasibility before more detailed engineering work is undertaken. An applicant would typically want to do this to get concurrence from the board that their schematic plans meet the town's requirements before investing time and money into a fully engineered design. When a planning board issues an approval for a preliminary plan, this is not yet approval for the development, but it is approval to move forward to the next step. The next step is the preparation of a definitive subdivision plan, which is a fully engineered plan, including all roadways and other features such as stream crossings, designed for an analysis of drainage and stormwater management systems, all utilities, and the final building lot layout. This design process also works within other regulations, including the Wetlands Protection Act and any overlay districts, such as our Water Resources Protection Area or Flood Zones. The board's review of a definitive subdivision plan includes a public hearing and a butter notification about the project in hearing, as well as newspaper advertisements about the hearing. In this phase, the board would most likely hire technical consultants at the applicant's expense to fully vet the engineered plans to ensure compliance with our standards and any other local, state, or federal regulations. During this phase, the board again works with the Board of Health, the DPW, the Conservation Commission, the Open Space Committee, the fire and police departments, and the building inspector to ensure all town needs are addressed. This stage can also include any traffic studies that may be warranted. Finally, once a plan is approved for construction, the applicant provides a bond or other surety to the town to cover the cost of the construction and other necessary improvements, which helps guarantee the completion of the work once it is started. The applicant also funds a clerk of the works type of position for the town to oversee the inspection of the work during construction. As I mentioned at the outset, the application before us now is for an open space residential development, which generally follows the same review and approval sequence, but with some additional steps and requirements that are necessary and provided in the zoning bylaw, Section 6-8, which addresses OSRDs. The main difference is that the applicant must receive a special permit from the planning board to pursue and potentially develop an OSRD. This special permit process has required tonight's public hearing, so that is the main focus of this hearing. As part of the special permit process, the applicant has needed to develop the preliminary plan for the OSRD, so that will be included by reference in the special permit process. In an OSRD, the building lots are permitted to be 10,000 square feet instead of our standard 40,000 square feet, under the condition that at least 50% of the tract be preserved as open space in perpetuity. So the main purpose for reviewing the preliminary plan with respect to this special permit is to determine the amount of open space that the proposal provides. As part of this process, we do need to confirm that the OSRD road and lot layout meets the dimensional requirements. The other main component of the OSRD process is the conventional subdivision yield plan, which shows how the tract could be developed under the standard subdivision regulations with the zoning required lot sizes. This plan shows a number of lots that the applicant believes they could reasonably fit on the tract under conventional regulations. This number of conventional lots on the yield plan is used to establish the number of lots that could be permitted in an OSRD. The minimum open space set aside of 50% is met. Then there can be the same number of OSRD lots as conventional lots. The OSRD section of the zoning bylaw defines a density bonus, which means that a 10% increase in set aside open space allows for a 10% increase in the number of OSRD lots. So having 60% of the lot in open space would allow for 110% of the number of conventional lots to be developed as OSRD lots. Similarly, having 70% of the tract in open space will grant the applicant the right to 120% of the number of conventional lots. So the conventional yield plan becomes the main focus of the special permit process to establish the number of allowable OSRD lots. Similarly, the preliminary OSRD plan, which shows the area left as open space, will determine any density bonus. These two steps are the main things we will focus on in this hearing. The separate process of reviewing the OSRD preliminary plan submission, which is outside of the special permit process but part of the subdivision process, is necessary to provide the applicant with either an approval, an approval with modifications, or a denial, which would require an explanation. If the plan is approved with or without modifications, this allows the applicant to move ahead with developing the definitive subdivision plans. For this case with the OSRD, the applicant will also need to have the special permit issued by the planning board to move ahead. The planning board will also be reviewing the OSRD plan to check conformance with our rules and regulations. And after this hearing is closed, we will be deliberating about our decision on that plan, along with soliciting input from the other town departments and boards that I've mentioned. And this is separate from the deliberation for the special permit. I could keep talking about all the details and finer points of these two processes for much longer than anyone wants to listen to me, so I'm going to turn the floor over to the applicant and their engineer to present both their conventional yield sketch plan and the OSRD preliminary plan. After that, we'll hear. After that, we'll hear from Weston and Sampson, who's providing the board with technical guidance to ensure that the plan, the proposed plans at this preliminary level meet our requirements. And our town planner, Val Massard, will help us with that review as well. Please note that the planning board met with James from Weston and Sampson two weeks ago at our last meeting to review his initial comments and any concerns that Val, our planner, also shared. Most of these have been relayed to the applicant, who was able to listen in on the meeting. So I believe that the applicant is prepared to address some of these items already that were mentioned in our last meeting. After the presentations and discussion with James, we will move on to hear comments and questions from the other boards and departments that I've already named, who are involved with the process, if they have them this evening. I'm asking these representatives to please share both thoughts and questions with the planning board and members of the public in the audience here to help everyone better understand the scope of the review the town is undertaking, if you're willing to do that. We're also asking these folks to send their written comments as well, to keep accurate records. After we've heard from the other town entities, we'll open the floor to the public for questions, first, and then comments. I'd like to separate the question period from the comment period so that the questions can be answered first, and then anyone wanting to provide comment will have as much information as we can provide at this time. That said, I will turn the floor over to Maureen Cameron. Right down? Okay. And so I believe Will is on line?
Yes. Good evening. For the record, Will Scooter from the Maureen Cameron Group, here on behalf of the applicant Bellpoint LLC for the open space residential development where we are proposing off, or land off Essex Park Road. And I will pull up, if I can share my screen, I will pull up the plans and kind of walk through the project that's in front of you. Okay. So the project we are proposing is a 36-lot open space residential development. It will contain a network of roads, basically off will be accessed directly from Essex Park Road, constructed a new roadway with, right now, a proposed emergency access driveway out to Turtleback Road. So in the plan set, you'll see we just have a general cover sheet, kind of showing the overview of what we're proposing. The lots comprised of three existing lots, or the projects comprised of three existing lots, with frontage on Western Ave, or Essex Park Road, which is accessed through Western Ave, and access rights out to Turtleback to construct the road. The second sheet in the plan set is just an overall existing conditions plan. As mentioned, the wetlands have been in front of the Conservation Commission, who have issued an order of resource area delineation to lock the wetlands in for us to move forward with any further development. We have conducted a good amount, extensive soil testing, targeting areas specific for the septic at this time. The next sheet is kind of one of the requirements of the OSRD sketch plan. This breaks down the different areas within the bylaw related to the primary conservation areas, secondary conservation areas, what they label as potentially developable areas. They're all color-coded, and for the most part, all the wetland areas that are shown kind of in this darker green are the primary conservation areas. That includes there's bordering vegetated wetlands, riverfront, or stream, and vernal pools on this property. The next plan is kind of the conventional yield plan. This plan is a proof of what we are allowed to build by right through the regulations, fully compliant with the dimensional requirements for not only the road design but all the lots. This basically shows a looped road within the development with access directly to Essex Park Road, as well as direct access to Turtleback Road. This, a total is a 30-lot subdivision that we are showing here. The next plan is what we're calling our OSRD, what we're proposing for our lot development. It's hard to see on the screen maybe, but the hatched area with all the dots is what we're proposing as open space, if this project moves forward with this development. You can see there's four different roads within this development. You've got Road A, Road B, Road C, and D, and currently, we are just proposing an emergency access instead of a full developed road out to Turtleback with the OSRD. The next three sheets are gonna contain, sorry, my computer's a little slow. The next three sheets are just a smaller scale, so you can see them a little bit better of the lots. We call this a lauding plan. It shows the dimensional compliance with the regulations, the zoning regulations. So I'll just go through these quickly. Again, sorry for the slow network I have here. The next sheets, this is an overall scale. It just kind of goes into the OSRD with more detail. This shows a box for a potential house location, a 40-by-80 box is what we're showing kind of as an area that you could build a house in. It has the roads graded. It shows preliminary design of where we're intending to put some of the stormwater structures. Currently, it's designed with a closed stormwater system, so collect it with a set of catch basins, you treat the stormwater. We have open surface ponds that we would infiltrate as much water as possible. The design would be fully compliant with all the state regulations, the stormwater standards. It also shows the collection of how we are proposing to collect sewage for the septic system. So each individual house would have a collection or a tank to collect the sewage. It would be then conveyed down and go to a leaching facility. This plan has two different associations that split the flow, so there's gonna be two different leaching facilities. Each different leaching facility would have a series of septic leaching areas. And then the next three plans, again, are just zoomed in to kind of make it a little bit easier to read the plans. We did grade the lots. This plan, you can see, there's gonna be a wetland crossing that will be fully compliant with the mass streams water standards. So we will be in front of the Conservation Commission as well, if this moves forward, with the OSRD or the conventional plan. Either way, we would be in front of them to permit anything within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. Again, these wetlands were already previously delineated, reviewed, and approved by the And then the last plan sheet was prepared so the Board of Health could review and kind of see the intent on how we are gonna be designing the septic systems, how we're gonna collect, what houses would be going to what different leaching facility. So this is just kind of a schematic plan to show the different associations that would be created, and how that flow would be split, collected, and then ultimately discharged into the leaching facilities. So that's just kind of a brief overview of the plan sets in front of you. As I mentioned, there's a couple things that are different with an OSRD development than obviously conventional. So we have smaller lots, they're kind of a condensed development, and the benefit is that the rest of the land is gonna be restricted in perpetuity for conservation of just open spacing. Yeah. Currently, the site is more or less completely wooded. It was logged at one time. There's evidence of old logging trails, and you can tell by the size of the trees out there that it has been logged in the past. One thing with the OSRD that we are presenting as well, right off the bat, there are some waivers that we would be requesting. The first waiver would be for the dead-end road length. Those regulations have a 1,200-foot maximum dead-end road length. There's no clear definition of what constitutes the dead-end road. In the past, in different towns we've dealt with, they have interpreted as for emergency access, and that's why we're proposing emergency access instead of a full road. We thought this was a better approach for the OSRD because it's gonna limit the pavement, it's gonna, you're gonna reduce the, or increase the open space by having a reduced footprint for that roadway section rather than a fully compliant road. And the benefit, it also benefits Turtleback residents because it provides a second means of emergency access to those residents as well. One thing with the emergency access road too, is that this road would be completely gated with only allowing emergency access, so people wouldn't be able to use this as a cut-through from Western Ave to get down to Apple Street. So the intent would be, currently proposed, is to maintain the section of roadway on the screen that, if you can see the cursor, as just emergency access, not a full road. So the second waiver that we're also gonna be requesting is gonna be for impervious coverage. There is a regulation that there is only a 25% impervious coverage allowed. Obviously, with smaller lots, that number kind of dilutes. So in order to go with an open space development, we're proposing to basically increase that number. We haven't fully designed these lots, but that is something that we will be pursuing at a later time. Rather than increase the lot size to decrease our percentage, we would request a waiver for that. And the last one that, right off the bat, we know, there is a regulation for a 30-foot setback for the parking for residential land use, single-family. We would be requesting a waiver to reduce that to, again, in order to minimize the impact of the actual lot development and increase that open space. So that's kind of an overview of what we're presenting for the OSRD. And then I just wanted to quickly go through, I did watch and catch up on the meeting from a couple weeks ago, so I just wanted to go through some of those items that were brought up and address those. 50% of the upland on-site will be part of this development, so we will provide the calculations to show that. That's part of the regulations, is 50% of uplands needs to be part of the open space, and we are gonna meet that requirement. The second is the stormwater systems be within the open space. The planning board may allow this to occur. The idea is to keep these open surface basins that will be vegetated, so again, complying with the whole natural fill for the open space. Another item is what will be the use of the open space. We haven't determined that, and depending if we move forward, but the idea would be to convey it to either the town or a nonprofit entity, rather than keep it as a privately owned association. That, you know, there's a couple benefits to that. For example, if you keep it in a private entity, there's nobody really to lease it or to manage it if somebody, say, was encroaching or dumping things out on the land. The next item is that the initial grading that we showed was on the conventional plan, and I'll go back to that sheet for us. We didn't, we just graded the road on this plan. We did not grade the lots. However, there was a preliminary subdivision that was submitted in 2012, and it was approved in 2013 by the planning. I'll pull those plans up, just kinda so we can see them. So this was the plan set that was submitted. This has road profiles, it has the grading, and it kind of has a proof plan showing the, that the lot is, it's a feasible subdivision. We did refine this plan a little bit, so we have a few more lots, but the overall road layout is the same. So we would like to present that as a proof of constructability slash feasibility for a conventional subdivision. The next thing, there was questions about can we build and cross the gas easement, and how close can we get, items to such. This is a, this was a developer handbook provided to us by Kinder Morgan that basically shows us the requirements that we need to meet. This is very generalized. This is something that we would, once, if we move forward, we would talk to Kinder Morgan, have discussions on exactly the design, but this shows that we're allowed to do it. In some of the regulations, the road needs to be at 90 degrees, you have to have a certain amount of cover over the existing gas main, you're not allowed to basically cut over the gas main, but we can fill up to a certain amount. So this kind of just documents that we are allowed to work in that easement. Again, it's an easement through the property, Kinder Morgan does not own a piece of property. The next item I just wanted to mention is gonna be that soil testing. It was done. We did not conduct soil testing on, I would say, the road, where the exact road is, because we kind of went out there preliminary. We just did it for septic areas. It's something that we most likely would be doing further down the road if we move forward. Again, that's something that we do as developers. We wanna know what we're working with as well. It's established, estimated seasonal hot groundwater, figure out the cuts, the fills, and try to balance the site. The idea is not to export material. I'm not saying that that's not guaranteed, but when we have a site like this, when we engineer it, we try to balance the cut and fill as much as possible. This is a large site, there's a lot of area, so I would not anticipate having any export of film to go. There was also some questions about constructing near the wetlands with some of the house plots. Again, these are preliminary plans, they're not finalized. We kind of grade things to prove that we can do it, to make sure that what we're designing, our road, that we can, we can do it, and the next step is we refine that design. So everything, again, would be in full compliance with the Wetlands Protection Act. Essex does not have a local wetlands bylaw, so everything shown on the plans that we have does comply with the state regulations. And then the last item, there was discussions about kind of the road design and what we were proposing. Currently, based on the regulations, we do show a cur, a roadway with a curb system to collect the stormwater. I know that there was comments about the Turtleback development, how that's kind of an open country drainage fill. Ideally, that's something that we can definitely look at. There's different regulations that have been implemented through the state for the stormwater collection and treatment that are slightly different from when that development went back in, but that's something that we can definitely look into. So that's just kind of my brief little overview for now, and then I'll just turn it over, and any questions on here?
Will, could you talk about the number of conventional lots, the amount of open space, and the number of OSRD lots that you're proposing?
Yes. So our conventional proof plan, we have 30 lots. So we are, by right, we're allowed to have, or not by right, but we can have up to 30 lots for the OSRD with 100%. We're pursuing to increase that, as was mentioned earlier, to get the bonus for additional open space. So our project, we're proposing to have over 70% open space, which would allow us to have the 20% increase, which would bring us to 36 OSRD lots.
Thank you for that, Will. James, if you're on there, would you care to go next and provide any feedback, further questions, or instructions for the planning board based on what you've seen before and what you've heard this evening? Understanding that if there's additional information that we're going to request, we could revisit some of these topics. Is James there? Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Are you able to hear me? Lisa, are you able to hear me?
Yep, yep, you're good. You're on the big screen here in our meeting room.
Okay, fantastic. So, well, very good. Yeah, it was good to hear the presentation. As you had mentioned, I had met with the board about two weeks ago, and I had gone over some preliminary comments, and we had a draft set of comments at that time. And the comments that we had presented two weeks ago are substantially the same as what we submitted in our letter that we gave to you today, with the exception that we did add a little bit more information. At our meeting two weeks ago, I had presented things really kind of as, sort of 10 highlights as a way to sort of go over the numerous comments that were throughout the letter. But what it kind of boils down to really is, there was the matter of the yield plan. We had kind of discussed that, you know, the yield plan kind of gives us a good sort of two-dimensional view of the validity of probably lots can be, can be developed under the conventional regulations. And, you know, in some of the discussion two weeks ago, it was sounding like, you know, it would be worth maybe kind of proofing out that yield plan a little bit more by looking at some of the grading. So from what I heard of the presentation tonight... So from what I heard of the presentation tonight, it sounds like Warren Cameron has submitted a previous, a previously developed conventional plan that, that might serve that purpose. I did, I did see it in the email earlier today, so we haven't had a chance for it to review that yet, but that's something that we can review as part of Warren Cameron's response, if, if that's what they wish to submit in response to that issue. There were just a couple of other minor things, like we noticed on the yield plan that I think it was Lot 27, it had a slightly smaller lot area than required. So that might be something that, that, that the engineer can respond to as well. There were, there were some of the issues of lot coverage. It sounds like, it sounds like the applicant's going to request a waiver for that. There's the 25% impervious coverage issue, and it sounds like they're going to try to request a waiver to try to allow greater impervious coverage, so the board will have to weigh whether, whether the, the benefits achieved by an OSRD outweigh the needs to try to stick to that 25%. So, so that was again, one of the issues I presented.
James, James, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have you on here on two separate accounts perhaps, and it looks like both of them are not on mute. Could you mute one of them? We're just getting a little bit of feedback.
Okay, I just left. I had it on my other device too, I apologize. Is this better?
We'll see. Thank you.
No.
Maybe it's someone at home. If, if you are at home, please make sure you're muted. Everyone's muted.
Okay.
I think the, the planning board is muted right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't hear anybody talking, if somebody's talking. But I did hear Will, I heard, I heard you. Is anybody from the board still there? Can you guys hear me?
It feels like we're getting feedback from you.
Let her know that we can't hear them in the room.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just pause for a moment until we get confirmation that we can hear them again.
Can you mute him? The other?
I did.
Okay. Okay, let's keep going. It sounds like it might be better now.
Joan, I'm getting a text that they can't hear us out from there now.
I think it's muted from the planning board.
It is, but it's supposed to be.
Okay.
There's like three different planning boards.
Did you, I don't know how that, I just heard about. Okay. But can you hear us now?
Can you hear us now at home? I'm getting a head nod.
I, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, can, can the board members who are, who are present in the planning board room hear us, and, and can we hear you?
Yep. Yeah, we're good now, right?
Okay. Great, perfect. Okay, so the next item I was going to mention, let's see here, there were some calculations regarding stormwater and some stormwater considerations that were rather numerous in the, in the regulations too, and, and some of our discussions two weeks ago, a lot of those things go to a level of detail that may be more appropriate for the, for the definitive plan stage. The thing is, is that the way the regulations are written, it kind of makes it sound like you have to deal with some of these stormwater regulations in order to get a special permit issued. So the board will have to figure out what the process is in terms of whether it's a waiver or a variance or, or something of that nature in order to sort of defer that. So I'll leave that to the, to the board to decide how that process needs to work, but it seems reasonable that this stage in the preliminary plan stage that we wouldn't necessarily have to iron out all those details fully. There was also the item regarding the 30-foot setback for parking. I, I heard, I heard, I heard Will say that that's another waiver they're going to request. Will also spoke to the issue of the open space calculations, where at least 50% of the total uplands of the site need to be included in the open space calculation, so it sounds like they're going to respond with the calculation demonstrating that. And, and also not including the stormwater basins as part of that calculation. A sixth item that I had here was the additional information that we provided regarding cut and fill volumes, and some more clarification on the use and the function of the open space. A seventh item was the dead-end road in excess of 1,200 feet, which Will has mentioned, it sounds like they're going to seek a waiver for that, with the justification being that they're providing an emergency access road off the end of it. We had a comment about there being some steep slopes behind certain of the lots on the grading plan for the OSRD subdivision plan, so that's something that the engineer can look at and respond to. A ninth item was that, you know, there were some other detailed specifications in the regulations for things like monumentation, street and sidewalk construction, utility construction, street trees and landscaping. And, you know, we've commented on various things throughout the letter. Some of these things, again, you know, are things that could possibly be deferred to the definitive plan stage if the board likes to do that. So that's something that can be looked at in more detail. And then finally, the final item that we kind of commented on was, there are portions of the site along the periphery that are, that are, looks like there might be a FEMA flood zone A encroaching into it a little bit. So as we all know, a zone A is, is a zone where there have been no detailed foot elevations determined by FEMA, and the local regulations indicate that the developer should determine what those elevations are as, as part of the plan of this magnitude. So that's, that's really kind of the, the highlights, I guess, of the letter. And like I said, the letter gets a lot more detail, so I, I think at this stage, from my standpoint as a reviewer, you know, I, I would assume that the engineer's probably going to look into some of these things and maybe issue some kind of a written response or something looking forward.
Yes.
So that's, that's kind of all I had. So happy to.
James, can, James, sorry to interrupt. Can you repeat that last part that we, we couldn't all hear?
It's just that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was just saying that, you know, with this detailed letter that I've issued, I would assume that probably the process from here forward and what I would probably expect to see, what I usually see as a reviewer is, you know, the engineer will most likely, I would guess, you know, I won't speak for Will, but I would guess what he's probably going to do is maybe come up with a, a written response to, to the, to the comments that I provided, and then that way we kind of have a formal response in hand and something that we can all kind of act on. And so I was just saying then too, that that's kind of all I had as far as comments, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, James. The planning board has received the final review letter from Weston and Sampson, which details a lot of what James has spoken about in his sort of summary this evening. So we have a 20-page report from them that the planning board members all have. We will be putting that information online, and we will be, as a board, going through the individual comments in more detail, but we're not going to step through that now. But we do have the summary, and we will take each comment that Weston and Sampson has made and discuss those as a board and come to a resolution about whether we want to ask more information from the applicant or to delay some of that information request to what would be a definitive subdivision phase. Some of it is probably applicable to vetting the conventional yield plan, and some of it would be normal details that would be developed in a definitive subdivision plan when they move forward. Planning board members, do you have questions for James at this point?
I have a question for Will. Who's that, Mary?
Yeah.
I would just like clarification, is the...
This is a question for Will.
I think.
Yeah, okay.
Are the open basins, the stormwater catchment, vegetated open basins, are those currently calculated as open space?
Currently, they are. And again, I, I think in the regulations, there's wording that says that they can be soft, non-structural, nitrally, low-impact stormwater, that basically the, the board could allow it to be counted towards the open space. But in the calculations front of you, they are within that, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn the meeting over to Val if she's here to see if she has any questions for either Will or for James, and to hopefully provide any feedback that she has for the planning board and the members of the public here.
Sure. I, I had one quick question for Will, is are the leaching fields run by gravity in terms of the, the flow?
It'll be a combination of a gravity and a pump system. They have not been fully designed yet, but the idea is to hopefully have as many houses on a gravity system, obviously mechanical. We try to avoid as much as possible, but there will be a requirement. For example, we know that the first three lots, one, two, and three, that are kind of on the other side in the low spot where the wetland is, those will need to be pumped, for sure.
Okay. And then I, I had a question for each of you relative to the, I think it's, it's really helpful that we're able to use the previous plans to look at answering some of these questions about the grading. And one question I had that I didn't see in the setup plans that you presented, Will, and maybe it would be easy to generate, would be a road profile, just based on the centerline?
Yeah, and that's something that we, with the previous approved preliminary subdivision, within that plan set, there, there's full road profiles, full design that is incorporated showing the grade. And again, our road is the exact same. Our, our lots changed in the design of our lots, but the road itself is the same, proving that it can be built peacefully.
Yeah. Well, that would be really helpful if you could share that with us, just so that we can understand the grading in terms of the steepness of the road, that, that kind of thing. And I think it's great that you're willing to share that with us and, and have that be part of the information that we can review, because it gives us more information to work with to understand your, your preliminary, la, preliminary layout and yield. So thank you for that. And my next question related to that would be, we, we all received it officially either late yesterday or today, and we would all need some more time to look at it in order to just understand it, what, once we have those, the road profiles. Do we think that, like, is, is two weeks a reasonable amount of time where we might be able to obtain the information? And then to James, whether that would be a reasonable amount of time to review it perhaps for the planning board?
Yeah, like I, I mentioned, those road profiles are in, in the preliminary plans that I, I presented, and I just went to the first sheet, but within that, there's a 10 plan sets. So the last sheets do already include the road profiles with all the grades.
We're going to be working after we go through the list from Weston and Sampson to see if there's other information that we're going to request from the applicant. We're going to be preparing a list of what will be supplemental information that will be added to the applicant's package. So we need to work out the logistics of how we supplement the package as far as the distribution and registering it with the town clerk. So there's some logistic details, but we do have, we have the Kinder Morgan information about the gas line, work around the gas line. We have the 2012 subdivision plans that are essentially the same alignment of the conventional yield plan that we're reviewing. So we're going to add those to the materials that we're going to be able to use for the review. Was there anything else, Will? I'm sorry, what was that, Val?
Well, I was just going to, I agree with Weston and Sampson that there should be a, like a narrative submitted by Will that sort of summarizes all the points that he made this evening, that's very helpful. And that I agree with the places where Weston and Sampson is saying, it might be early to be asking for the amount of detail that might be required once a definitive plan is being designed because of the cost element and the time element that would go with it. So I'm looking at that as something that would be a condition of any, you know, I think preliminary plan approval is, is more about providing direction and not necessarily something that gets recorded or has a decision in it, but you could provide that, you, and you expect that the, the definitive plan would include the detail about stormwater and so forth that's necessary.
That, yeah, that makes sense, because it, as we go through these two concurrent processes of preparing a special permit, if the conventional plan proves out that we, that the OSRD has merit, we, we, we need to condition that special permit and look at those sort of items that we would want to see in the OSRD. Same thing with, when we look at the preliminary OSRD plan, we can provide feedback with that. So we can approve it with modifications. We have three options. We can approve it, approve it with modifications and/or recommendations, or deny it. If we deny it, we need to have reasons for that too. So a lot of these things about other information that we're going to want to see at some point in the process can be conditions of either or, the special permit or the review of the preliminary plan. It's confusing.
Yeah, and I would just recommend that we go through those and sort them out in terms of what makes sense to have on record with the registry of deeds, and what makes sense to be like more of a, the preliminary plan feedback, so that it's not burdensome in terms of what's recorded.
Correct, right. That makes sense.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
Just to clarify, when we approve the special permit, we're approving 36 lots, and we can then make changes or things to the plan? Or can we say, yes, we grant the special permit, but then when we get additional information, we say, actually, this is only 60% open space? If we took out, and then say, now you're only eligible for this? How, the special permit, once we approve it, that's the number of lots, correct?
I believe so. And, and that's, these are some questions we'll also confirm with town council. This is the first time we've done an open space residential development in Essex, so we're in a little bit of uncharted territory, so anytime we have questions, we're going to ask both Val and/or town council for clarity on that. So the idea of the special permit is to grant the right to develop an open space residential development. And we could, if we're comfortable with what's been proven on the conventional plan and the open space ratios that are provided on the preliminary plan for the OSRD, we could in that special permit say, yes, you can have 36 lots. Or we could condition that and say that we need to have further proof at the stage when they develop the definitive for the open space development. I think my, my personal preference would be to arrive at a hard number for the special permit, so that there's not question about it, and we're not doing more math after the fact. It's a recorded document, it's a, so it's, I, I feel like that's the cleanest way to approach it, but those are questions that I will definitely put forward to town council for clarity around that. Val, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And you can, I'm sorry, you can say up to a certain number of lots, and then put those conditions in so that, you know, you're, you're saying that it could be that full amount if they, if there's no, you know, issues with the definitive plan.
Okay. So that, that's something I will talk to county council about and get better direction on whether we need to put a hard number or whether we can put a conditioned number on, on that. But for the special permit process, the things that we need to look at are the conventional yield plan and confirming the 30 lots, and part of that is going to be reviewing the profiles that are in the 2012, and, and James alluded... reviewing the profiles that are in the 2012, and James alluded to that. He hasn't had a chance to go through those yet, so we'll be looking at that, and Weston and Sampson will be looking at that. And we'll be asking for an addendum to what's provided here to go along with the addendum that the applicant will be providing that is going to contain this additional information. So, the applicant's gonna give us an addendum, and we'll ask Weston and Sampson for a review of that addendum, which will supplement the report that they've given us. Not necessarily revise this one, but just look at those additional materials. Does that work? Okay. So, that said, I will open the meeting up to other members of town committees or boards. If you have either comments or questions, this would be the time to do it. Questions first, preferably, but comments from the boards and committees and departments are welcome now, too, to help inform the planning board and the process. There's a microphone and a podium, and if you want to come up there, you can have your moment in the sun. Sorry.
Guess I'll go first. Wesley Burnham, Department of Public Works. First comment I got is, just as a little bit of history on the preliminary plan stuff, we almost always used the approval with up to X number of lots. That way, if there was a technical issue that came up later, it didn't impair moving along. Enough said on that. One question I've got, maybe I missed it. Did he address the 15% impervious coverage limit that we've got?
Will did talk about that, and he said they're going to ask for a waiver on that.
I just want to point out, that's a bylaw. That's not a regulation. We can waive regulations, but you can't waive the bylaw. That's gonna require a variance.
Variance, correct.
Same with the 25% building coverage.
And the same with the 30-foot parking.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, those are all gonna require variance. It's a lot more than...
Yeah, it's not a waiver for anything. We can waive things that are in the regulations. We can't waive things that are in the bylaw. That's a variance that needs to come from the ZBA.
Correct. And as far as the DPW goes, I know I've already stated it, I just want to reiterate it one more time. We want to make sure that the water main is tied in from Essex Park Road all the way through to Turtleback as part of this process.
And that creates a redundant loop, which basically makes it...
It makes it a lot more reliable.
A safer system for, right, okay.
Yeah. It's a lot easier to keep reliable system integrity. There's one other thing. What was it? Oh, the dead-end street issue. I haven't really discussed it with the rest of the DPW commissioners, except briefly. But I'm not a big fan of waiving the 1,200-foot limit. Part of it's from 40 years on the fire department, not wanting to run one way in, one way out, much more than 1,000 feet. And like, just keep that in mind as you deliberate and try to avoid it. It may involve a full access to Turtleback Extension, which isn't unreasonable. And I don't see anybody using that as a shortcut to get to Apple Street. Turtleback Extension will probably use it as a shortcut to get out to Weston Ave.
So, I think the waiver would be on just the one road, A, that is the longest dead end there, and that is the one that's directly connected to what would be the, drawing a blank, sorry, the access road, the public safety access road, the limited access road. So, that would, that would be at the end of...
I'm pushing to avoid the limited access and make it a full access, year-round and usable, without having to get out with a key and open a gate, as an ambulance driver, as a fire truck, firefighter. I've been through that before. It's bad enough when somebody's got an electronic gate that we gotta open, but that isn't gonna happen up there. I can't see it. So, I'm just requesting that you not provide that 1,200-foot waiver. Look at it as leaving it alone.
Right. And we will talk to the public safety departments as well on that. Hold on one sec. Just Board of Health or anyone, so, did you have a question, Peter?
Yes, but before I ask my question, I need to call the Board of Selectment to Order at 8:20, as we have a quorum in the room. My question is, is there any option within the permit, the special permit, the variance, or the waiver to incentivize or require affordable housing units or 55-plus as part of this?
We haven't talked about that with the applicant yet.
Okay, is there any place that that can be done, any of those options, the variance, waiver, special permit?
That's something I need to talk to town council about. I know we can ask for affordable units. I do not think we can ask for 55-plus at this point. We don't have anything enacted in our bylaw that gives us the right to ask for that. Affordable housing is a state right, but those are questions I will need to go to town council with.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I'm sorry, Erin, did you have?
Do we have anyone from other departments on? Hi, Erin Kirchner, Board of Health Administrator. And I just want to preface this by saying these comments are my own notes from reviewing the plans. The Board of Health has a meeting tomorrow and may have something more formal for you from the full board. So, these are just my sort of informal notes. And most of it has to do...
I'm sorry, Erin, just to clarify for people here, Erin is the Board of Health Administrator, and she's the one who witnessed all of the soil testing out on the site for perking the property.
A lot of soil testing. So, most of this sort of has to do with the establishment of a property owners' association and HOA, and who will be responsible for maintenance of septic system, the open space area. The public space, not just regarding the roadway, snow removal, things like that, but trash removal, particularly where the public parking area is, individual septic system components, whether it's septic tank, pump chamber, the piping. I would like to see, I think it's reasonable to request more frequent inspections or maybe more frequent pumpouts than what's required in Title V for shared septic systems. And, hold on one second, I lost my, I lost my space here. Regarding where the shared leaching areas are, it's my understanding that it will be an easement rather than two distinct lots, but I think it's reasonable to expect that the shared leaching areas meet the same setbacks as if there was a property line in between them. Typically, for a residential septic system, the leaching area is 10 feet off the property line, so it'd be a minimum of 20 feet. I think it's reasonable to expect the same or greater if there's only an easement for the shared leaching areas. And then, regarding the drainage areas that are shown, and this is something that was in a previously reviewed and approved subdivision plan, we don't want to create any more of a mosquito breeding habitat. So, I would like to see that the property owners' association, the homeowners' association have a maintenance program in place to make sure the drainage areas are functioning as they're intended, and, you know, the water drains out within five days or something, and that those are maintained and kept up, and they're functioning as they should. That's it.
Do you guys have any questions for Erin regarding the septic, or any of that?
I mean, and this is just really general septic stuff, obviously. As Will mentioned, we haven't seen the septic plans yet, and I don't expect to see them within the next couple of weeks or before May 28th, the deadline of submitting the final comments to you guys. This is general stuff that it would be nice to see in the plan before we even get to the actual septic design approval stage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Do we have any other members of DPW, Board of Health, Police, Fire, Conservation, Open Space, or you, Bill, with comment or questions? Okay. Anyone else online? Cliff?
Hi, I'm Cliff Agaloff, 44 Addison Street, co-chair of the Conservation Commission. I just would like to reiterate, the applicant did mention that they had an approval from the Conservation Commission. What we did approve was the delineation of the wetlands. We had no other approvals, and that was also a peer-reviewed process as well. That's the only piece that has been before our board. I just want to make sure that that was heard by everybody to be, as I just said it, not that we approved any type of plan whatsoever.
Right. No, that, thank you for pointing that out. It is the ORAD, so that what you have done is confirmed the wetland delineation that's on the plan. And that's important, because when they do the lotting plans and lay out the building lots and are looking to meet the necessary square footage of 40,000 square feet in the conventional yield plan and 10,000 square feet in the OSRD plans, that lot area cannot include the wetlands. So, it's important that they went through and verified the wetlands, so that when Morn and Cameron draws the lots, they are not including, like, the lots, if you look at the plans, the lots actually include wetland areas, but the areas that are calculated for the lots do not include it. So, on the drawings with the plans, you'll see two columns for area that is not wet, and then total area of each lot. So, it's the area that's outside of the wetlands that is used for the basis of establishing either the 10,000-square foot or the 40,000-square foot. And those are the columns that are on both of those plans. And with one exception, that they're going to tweak their, they meet all those areas for both the conventional and for the OSRD plan at this preliminary phase. Okay, and then Wesley? Sure. You have to come to the mic, though, sorry, because we think you need more exercise.
I know. I need, I'm sorry. You were discussing trying to get some more information before you decided to make your decision. I just wanted to caution you that you can't receive any further information for this special permit after you close the hearing. So, I just wanted to remind you guys that if you're gonna request more info, you're gonna have to hold the hearing open, accept it, and then you can close the hearing.
Correct.
Just a procedure.
Yeah, no, I said at the outset of the meeting that we'll probably be continuing the hearing to the fourth, and...
I was just reiterating, because you did mention that you were gonna be requesting more, and rather than screw it up.
Thank you. We don't want to screw up, for sure. So, okay, members of the public, if you have, what I would like to do, like I said earlier, is entertain questions first, so that if you have questions for either Will from the applicant, from James, who's representing our engineering consultant, Val, our town planner, members of the planning board, or either Board of Health or DPW, who are both in the room this evening, if you have questions for any of us, please come to the microphone and give your name and address, so that we can keep track of it, and we'll do our best to answer your questions.
Hello, I'm Scotty Robinson. I'm a Turtleback Road resident. I have a question for Will.
Turtleback?
Yes.
Number, thank you.
I have a question for Will. As you were going through your list, immediately after you talked about the waivers you would request, I think it was number four, I think, I couldn't really understand what you said, and I'd like you to clarify what you said. I heard that you said, "The road is graded, the lots are not." And then, you referenced what you said was 2012 or 2013 plan for a subdivision on the same area, on the same site, and I'm wondering what relevance is that plan? And I have a question for other people as well. Questions?
Okay. Will, are you there, and do you want to answer that question? Can you?
Yeah, sure, sure, just to clarify. So, what I was referencing is that the plans that we submitted with the OSRD application, our conventional proof plan, we only showed grading for the road design. So, we didn't grade the whole site as we did on the OSRD plans. So, the conventional roadway on our plans only shows kind of the road grading. What I was referencing with regards to the 2012 plan, the 2013 approval for the preliminary subdivision that was before the board, it's the same road, and that shows the lot grading for the entire site. So, how do those grades tie into the existing grade? That was based on discussions or requests from the last meeting of basically providing a proof plan that the conventional roadway that we're proposing is feasible and constructable. So, our plans don't show all the grading, but because that grading has already been done. So, that's, hopefully that clarifies.
Are you saying that the grading, the actual grading, has been done, or that the drawings for the grading has been done?
When I'm talking about the grading, I'm talking about proposed grading. The site, no grading has been done. So, this is all just what's proposed on the plans.
And does it matter that, you know, in the 12 years, that the topography has probably changed? There's been a lot of running water through there, there've been a lot of storms, there's a lot of mud. Does that have any relevance to the way that it might be designed if it were looked at today instead of your design coming off of a 12-year-old plan? I don't know, I'm asking.
No, for the, the grades from 12 years ago from this site, it's basically undisturbed is how we look at it from an engineering perspective. Yeah, there's maybe minor grades and things that changed where you get a little erosion somewhere, or rock moves or things like that, but the overall concept of the grading is not affected by anything in the last 12 years.
Okay. Then, I wanted to ask, James, is that a normal thing that you would look at some, someone else's design, whether or not it had been approved for a subdivision? It seems irrelevant to me, because it's not the same process that they're being subjected to, and it's not the same number of homes, number of lots, and so on. I don't know. Is that...
You're talking about the...
Okay thing to do?
Are you talking about the, you're talking about the previous subdivision design being considered in, yeah, I mean...
To me, it doesn't, it sounds like it's being presented as, well, it was okay then, it must be okay now. And I don't know if that's a standard way of operating or not.
Well, I think it remains to be seen. You know, I haven't had the opportunity really to kind of dive in and look at it really closely. I mean, what I'm hearing from Will is that the street, the roadway network that was proposed as part of that previous subdivision plan is evidently supposed to be the same or similar to the one in the current yield plan. And if that's the case, then it's quite possible that it might be a valid, a valid plan to review, to help establish the feasibility of the yield plan. So, all that is to say, you know, we shouldn't dismiss it at this point, just because it's an older plan. We should, you know, I'm open-minded about it, I'm open to it. You know, I'd like to just have the opportunity to review it and see if it looks like it's a valid piece of technical information to take into consideration.
And I don't know who to address this to, but I have a question about the, the idea that the open space would be conveyed to the town or to a nonprofit, not to keep it as a part of an owner's association, part of the property. Am I understanding correctly that the stormwater basins and so on would be, will be part of that open space, or that's the suggestion, that it will be part of the open space? And if that were the case, why would someone else want to own it? It doesn't seem useful. It seems like it would be a pain in the neck if there were, you know, if maintenance wasn't up to snuff and something, it became a mosquito breeding area, as someone else suggested earlier this evening. I don't know, it just doesn't...
No, that, that's a good point. Why would, why would a conservation organization want to assume property that has the drainage basins for the subdivision? So that, that's something we would need to sort out, whether they're going to be included in the open space and how that would be handled. So that's, that's a good point. Thank you.
Okay, and then I have a question about the waiver for the length of the road. I believe that the, I'm sorry, I've got the names mixed up. Will? No.
Will is from Maureen Cameron for the applicant, and James is Weston and Sampson working for the town.
Okay. The person who is representing the applicant said that a waiver for the road length would... I, I didn't hear why, I didn't understand why that was a good idea, or why he thought it was a good idea. Can I get that from you again?
Will, can you talk about the road length waiver again, please?
Yeah, so right now, we're proposing, we're going to be requesting a waiver for the road length. As you can see on the conventional subdivision plan, we, we can comply fully and build a fully conventional road out to Turtleback. I have been in discussions with some residents in Turtleback. They don't want to have a full roadway that basically anybody can use, so that's why we're proposing it to be emergency access only.
But you seem to say that it was a good idea for Turtleback Road residents at the time that you talked about it earlier?
The, the benefit from my discussion with the residents in Turtleback is that it won't be a fully constructed road that people can, can use and drive down, so there's not going to be an increase in traffic on Turtleback Road. The benefit is that it will provide a second means of emergency egress to Turtleback from Western.
But the idea for this purpose is that Turtleback would provide emergency egress for this development. It's not something Turtleback Road residents are dying to have installed, believe me. And we've been stuck on Turtleback Road before. It's a private road. It's a narrow road. If a tree falls, we have to get together and cut it down and clear the roadway again. That's not going to change simply because another group has emergency access to Turtleback Road. It means there's a longer area that needs to be privately maintained as a useful roadway. That's my understanding. And we do not have a homeowners' association on Turtleback Road, and we're not about to start one so that we can be a better egress for 30 other lot residences. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a comment. I'll save it.
No, that's, that's, that's fine. Thank you. Dan, would you like to speak?
Just on that specific piece.
Introduce yourself, if you would, just, okay, thanks, Dan.
Hi, everyone. Dan Gorman here, applicant. Just on the piece, and Will, and ever anyone else for that matter, keep me honest, I am not an attorney, right? I think just the request for a waiver on the road length, the law, I think, the, the law on that, Massachusetts law, is ambiguous, right? I think whether one technically, whether this would technically even require a waiver, because the definition certainly locally within the bylaws, and I think at the state level, is ambiguous at best as to whether this even constitutes by definition a, a dead end or not, if this were to be an emergency road only. It's more just, you know, to kind of blanket that specific discussion and say, well, there's a waiver, so regardless of the interpretation of that definition, there's coverage there. And then, I guess, to the, the, the decision point, I think internally, or the, if I'm, if I were to be living in Turtleback, it would be, okay, there's going to be a road here. Would I rather this be a true throughway where cars, I think, would by right have the option to, pedestrians, to go in and out of because it's a standard road? Or would I rather this road only be used in the event of, you know, emergence, in emergency? So the, whether a waiver is required, I think, remains, you know, a, a bit of a fuzzy issue. So that was my only comment.
Thank you, Dan. The definition of a dead end is hard to find. Other questions from public?
Question from public.
Sure.
You've excelled to Turtleback Road. Acknowledging that there is a fuzzy definition of how long a dead end is, is there a length that the road could be, shorter than 1,200 feet, that would not necessitate even having an emergency access through Turtleback? You know, not, not having a throughway, not hanging with an emergency gate, but having a shorter dead-end road for the development?
The standard in our rules and regulations is 1,200-foot dead end is the maximum. So that's, that's what could be had without anything. The question here is, is if there is a, an emergency access, is that even then a dead end? So is a dead end for everyone or just for public safety? So it, that, that's not clear, and we've looked and haven't found good guidance on that anywhere, honestly. So that's, it, it's something we'll be talking about with town council as we move through this process, working to try and get some kind of clarity around that.
How good?
Sure.
Brian Torsicolo, 32 Pond Street. I guess this would be for Will. How come no preliminary stormwater protection plans or any have been submitted to Conservation yet for those three drawings?
I'm not sure what you mean by that. We're right now in front of the planning board for a preliminary subdivision review. That, that's at a later step. We would have to be in front of Conservation if we move forward with either a conventional subdivision or an OSRD plan, but right now, we're in front of the planning board with the OSRD to hopefully either get approval or move forward with a conventional subdivision.
But as the Conservation said before, they only approved the delineation, wouldn't it have been advantageous to have had a couple of these plans in place for Conservation to sign off on before you stepped in front of the town here, saying that the Conservation signed off on everything?
I only said that the Conservation has approved the wetland delineation. That's all I mentioned. They, we have not been in front of them to present this project. That's at a later stage.
Okay. Do you know why the 2013 plans never got built?
I don't know. I was not involved with the project back then.
Gotcha. Is there a remediation plan for the contaminated area?
With regards to the contaminated area, that's actually, I can't remember the exact address, the factory or warehouses that's off Essex Park Road. My understanding is they have been dealing with the state over the years for the remediation of that, and that's something that they have been taking care of.
So then why are the fences and everything still up? Because with the stormwater, everything's going to be flowing down to Pond Street here, so there's got to be something to remediate that to not affect all the water and the flooding that's going to be caused from this, from Pond Street. So is that going to be brought in later to the Conservation Committee, or is that going to be in these preliminary plans?
Everything is for the, the contaminated area is off-site. Again, I, I don't know why it's fenced off. That's, it is remediation. I know that, that has occurred, but I don't know the details of it. That's, that's all I can provide for that area.
So although it's off-site, is it still being accounted for, for the runoff, even though it's an abutting property?
We're not at that stage of this development right now.
Got it.
At the time when the, if, if and when we get to definitive subdivision plans, all the stormwater regulations will need to be met. That will obviously be part of the process reviewed by CONCOM and DPW. The contaminated area has been remediated and contained, and it's still being monitored because it, my understanding, and I don't know, Erin, if you have any more to add to it, there's a lot of information on the DEP website, like dozens of reports and monitoring, but the resolution of that was that the material was removed and the contaminated soil was contained. So that's what we've been told is the status of that. They continue to monitor it to make sure it stays contained, and that's probably why the fencing is around there. But it, it is off-site, and it has been addressed, so I don't think that whatever the site does as far as stormwater management, the, the intent of managing the stormwater is not to increase the downhill effect from a property. So that's part of the design that they would need to prove out and that we would have peer reviewed at the time we get to that step.
Got it. And I guess this one would be for the board as a whole. The state of Massachusetts median age is like 38 years old, and the average home has 1.9 kids. If they put, you know, upwards of 35 houses here, that could be an influx of upwards of 70 students. I think people in that median age range around 37, that's around elementary school kids. How does the town plan on dealing with that when we were all in a tax override meeting two weeks ago because we didn't have enough money to fund 20 teachers? The school's not going to be able to maintain that, so how are we going to take an influx of kids there?
I, I understand that some people in town have concern about that. The process that the planning board goes through is regulated by the subdivision control law and our regulations, and there is nothing in any of that that talks about regulating property based on the impact of who could live on that property. So that's not a consideration that we can even begin to entertain in our process.
But as voted town officials, shouldn't you have the town's best interest?
We cannot entertain information that's not in our regulations. We can't enforce new laws or make up new laws as we go. It's just not how the subdivision control bylaw is written, as subdivision control law that's in the state regulations. Any other questions?
Peter Ferrio, 26 Rocky Hill Road. I have a question and a comment, if that's okay. What is the proximity of the hazardous waste site to the development?
I'm sorry, what is?
What is the proximity? Where is the location of the hazardous waste site? This is to the applicant, to the development.
I don't know the exact distance. It's on the northwest corner of the property. We are not doing any work, no, we're not proposing any work exactly at that area, near that property line. I don't know the distance off the top of my head.
I, I think you should find out where that is, because there's a solution statement for RTN 3-02603. Monitoring of the groundwater and periodic evaluations to the feasibility of implementing a permanent solution are planned to continue on this property. This prior gentleman hit on a lot of the topics that I wanted to hit on.
Speak to the microphone, if you would, please.
My apologies. That I wanted to hit on, but this hazardous waste site should be a strong consideration with the groundwater and the flow and things of that nature. And if it's okay, I'd like to make a comment.
I don't think we have any more questions, so I might as well move on to comments. And if someone has a question as we go, they're still welcome to, to offer that up.
To the applicant, your presentation was horrible. It would have been nice for you to be in person here so we could hear and see you instead of trying to listen through a speaker and understand really what was going on. I'm not sure, there's a lot of people in this room that are dying for this development, and I think you need to be a lot more clear on the presentation. Thank you.
Other comments? If you want to come to the microphone and name and address, please.
My name is James Duda. I live at 116 Western Ave. My driveway is one of two that enters out onto Essex Park Road, so this, this would really affect me. I live on a, a dead-end street now. I certainly, I'll be upfront about it, I certainly don't want this. I was relieved back in 2012 when it didn't move forward. All looks very familiar to me. I've seen this before. I think Scotty has pretty much seen this before. Why is this different than what we saw in 2012? The, the dead-end road issue sounds very familiar, the water issues sound familiar. It's all, it's all a rehash of what we heard in 2012. It is. It's, it's, even then, when I looked at the map, I, I thought it looked very familiar. It was essentially the same thing I looked at in 2012. Was rejected then. I don't know if this is the form and to ask, the format to ask that you consider that. Somebody rejected it then for, for reasons, those seem, seems to me those same reasons would, would be valid today. That's all I have to say. This, this...
As, as a point of clarification, the, the plan, the plan that was approved, the plan that was submitted in 2012 did receive approval. Preliminary subdivision plan was approved. The applicant never took it to the definitive stage, and, and I don't know why that is, but the planning board did approve the 2012 plan for 27 lots on, on that property.
I stand corrected that it wasn't approved, but I know it didn't move forward. There must have been a reason it didn't move forward.
I don't know.
I'd like to find out why it didn't move forward, and I certainly don't want this to move forward.
2049.
Okay.
Thank you. Other comments? Anyone else want to come forward and offer comments?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, he's requesting to comment.
Jean Rainey, 14 Turtleback. Just one very quick question and a couple comments. To Betsy's earlier point, and this is for the applicant, if the dead-end road regulation is 1,200 max, can you refresh my memory what the actual proposed OSRD road is that's in excess of that? How much of a differential are we looking at?
Give me a second, I can get you the number. And again, we're, we're requesting a waiver so we don't have to build, our by right, we are allowed to build a road, fully compliant, out to Turtleback. So...
Yeah, so obviously, as a Turtleback Road resident, my comments are, once again, surrounding our desire not to become a through road. Wanted to put a finer point on a couple of the comments that have already been made. So to Scotty's point about the fact that Turtleback does not actually have a roadway association, it would seem at the length of the road that we should, but we do not for legal and historic reasons that are beyond the scope for right now. But the impact of that is that even in our current state, it is challenging. We are, you know, it's a private road, so we're responsible for the upcape maintenance, snowplow, and the owner of the, the lower part of the road essentially abandoned it over years. It got to the point where it was practically impassable, and it took the Turtleback Road residents years of spot patching and then finally getting to the point where we were so exasperated that we managed, with a lot of support from some, you know, volunteers who did a fantastic job coordinating the neighborhood, we actually got the residents together to shell out, you know, 85-plus grand to pave the road and make it passable. Moving forward, and particularly, it's hard enough when it's just Turtleback Road, but if there are more people potentially passing through that road, there's, there's no legal and practical way to, without, you know, the structure to do that, it just becomes a logistical nightmare. way to, without, you know, the structure to do that, it just becomes a logistical nightmare. So just wanted to put that out there. And then just a couple of other points. Obviously, I think there's a preference not to have any connection, but if there is a connection, our strong preference is the emergency access that's currently being proposed, given our understanding that it would be gated. If that were not the case, and there was ever a passable connection, which I know some people have a preference for that's been expressed tonight, access and safety become a real issue. The slope at the bottom of Turtleback is so steep, and there's no landing area, and it's very narrow with very little sightline. I had a visitor a few years ago who, in icy conditions, actually slid down and had to blindly accelerate at the end of the road into the driveway across the street because he couldn't stop. It's just, it's very challenging and very poor visibility. There are also easement issues. So from a legal perspective, when we looked at this a number of years back, and we refreshed our memory on this with an attorney, there are two lots that never granted easement. So if there were ever an attempt to make this a through road, there are legal questions there that are significant. And for all of the other lots, it could be viewed as an abuse of the easement. And I think my previous comment has already been covered, so.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Ryan Torsicolo, 32 Pond Street. I think at the applicant's expense, a tree, a fair tree evaluation should be completed of all lots and roads and all the trees that are going to be removed there and whatever DBH trees that are taken, it should be a one-inch to one-inch replanting. Or the evaluation of the trees subsequently could be put towards other wildlife habitats instead of the normal conservation committee, you know, you cut down a tree, replant it with a two-inch DBH tree. So it should be valued, or equal value, and also look at the offsets of oxygen and everything like that, too, at the applicant's expense. And then they should also slap on a five-year guarantee. A lot of these landscapers and builders will just plant the trees, and they die within a year, and then there is nothing holding them to it. So everything they've done, it just doesn't matter. So if they are, and this is a big hot topic, open space and green area, let's try to keep it going from the area that they just deforested in the process. And I would also like to reiterate what he said. I feel like this is a really big deal for Essex. This is a huge subdivision. It is really poor showing to not be here in person for something like that from the applicant and people on the board that are zooming in. We haven't been able to hear half the things people are saying. People mentioned it and walked out of the meeting within 20 minutes. So in the future, if there is one of these again, if everyone, including the applicants, could be here in person, I think it would go a long way for the townspeople and the people sitting here.
Just to address that, the public hearing is something that has to be put into motion weeks ahead. We have to advertise it and send out the abutter notifications that many of you received. And when personal circumstances make it impossible for someone to come to the meeting, we're not in a position to postpone it because it's been advertised and we have to have it tonight. So we are going to be continuing the meeting, continuing the hearing to our next meeting on June 4th, and hopefully the applicant will be able to be present in the room with us so that we can continue the conversation and address any further concerns. It's unfortunately, we wanted to go ahead with it. We could have just completely postponed or continued the hearing without having any information tonight, but since it was posted, it seemed best to go forward with it. Dan?
I mean, you mostly covered what I was just, I was just gonna kind of vouch for Will and not to air everything up, but the man just had knee surgery, and we, so he's doing his very best, and I'm sure he'll be here next time. So that was, it was just life happening, so thanks for bearing with us.
Other comments? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I am going to take a motion from a planning board member to continue the public hearing to our next meeting, which is on June 4th. Thank you, Shelley. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Beth. All those in favor of continuing the hearing to our next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait a water.
Val?
You should state the date and time.
Say date and time in the motion she's saying.
Yep.
Val is saying to include.
Too late.
We're still in a meeting, so if you could just leave silently, please, we have more business to take care of.
You just need to include the time.
So Val is saying to include the date and time in the motion.
The date is June 4th, and we'll continue the public hearing again at 7:15? Okay.
No move.
Second.
May I ask a question?
All those in favor of 7:15 continuation?
Aye.
Aye.
Ellen wants to ask a question.
We got some procedural things. We didn't take online comments, and someone online, I know, and now it's been continued.
No, we are not done. The 14th, 14th of June, on the 45 days. We have time, and we'll ask for an extension if we need it.
I didn't realize it was on my phone.
Oh, really?
We've done one already.
You can't tell. My pen. You do still have this if you want to tell the online people.
Lisa, can I interrupt for a second?
What do we do about that?
Just one sec, Janet. We're trying to work this out.
Thank you.
We were going to continue the hearing at 9 o'clock anyway. I mean, we just haven't gotten to all the public comment. We weren't going to go longer anyway, and we're just going to have to continue public comment at our next meeting because it's 9 o'clock, and I was, is that reasonable? I mean, that, I wasn't going to go past 9 with the hearing.
Yeah, I just think we need to explain to, just let people know.
Yeah, if people are still online, as part of the public hearing, we are continuing at 7:15 on June 4th. We will continue public comment then. It's 9 o'clock now, and it was our intention to, if we weren't finished with it, and we also have other reasons because we're going to be receiving additional information, that the public hearing will be continued. And if you were online and still have public comment to make, please make it two weeks from tonight, or you're welcome to email the planningboard@planningboard@essexma.com.org with that information also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley's asking if there's chat. No, I have the chat function closed. That's information from me for people at home to get the links.
Is that the only question online?
Someone unmuted to ask if they could make a comment.
Uh huh. But that's the only one.
Well, there might have been more, but the hearing was closed.
Well, not closed.
Continued, excuse me.
Will and James, we're not going to continue with this. It's 9 o'clock now. We will be continuing the conversation at our next meeting, so you're welcome to stay if you want.
Nope, just wrapping up. I appreciate it. Thanks, guys, and we'll talk to you on the 4th.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Bill?
Thank you.
Everyone was off from water.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Tried to do it.
I would take one. Thank you, Dan.
But I'll take a Reese's.
One's not enough.
It's going to have to be enough.
So are we done? Okay, we approved the minutes while you were.
Both sets?
Yeah.
But I didn't.
I, um.
I got it.
For the first minutes, I moved it, and who seconded?
You know, I can look it up on, well, no, actually, I don't.
Because on the second minutes, Beth moved it, and I seconded.
Okay. I'm sorry, do you know who seconded the first set?
That's the only question.
Did you?
That's what I thought. Simone. So I moved it, Simone seconded it. On the first. Beth.
Got it.
Moved it, and then I seconded on the second.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, you do have a couple other things left on the back.
Public Works recommendation, we don't have to make that recommendation until June 18th. So we can talk about that again on the 4th. Nick Ellis does want to continue on the DPW. We can nominate one person or we can nominate two. I don't see, I mean, Nick's done one term. He's chair right now, and it's working out well, so I don't see a compelling reason to nominate someone else.
If we nominated somebody, wouldn't they have to know and want to do it?
Right, yes, you would, yeah. I mean, we would, you would have to find someone who would be willing to accept a nomination, and then we put those, whatever names, one or two people to the Board of Selectmen, and they pick after an interview. So we'll, we'll talk about that again on the 4th, but we don't really need to do anymore because we have one candidate, and we can just nominate him and be done with that. So unless someone knows someone else who is, has a burning desire to be on the Board of Public Works. As far as our annual reorganization of election of officers, which normally happens after the town election, I am going to suggest that we table that discussion until we get through this OSRD, just the preliminary part of this process, so that, if that makes sense.
I'm going to suggest we table it until we just have a full board present. If we have a full board present at the next meeting, I think we might still want to go ahead and do it. Right now, we don't have a full board, so.
I'm not going to be there next meeting either.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So if we end up with a full board at some meeting, it might be nice to do it then.
Right, but this, okay, I was just trying to get through the end of this process.
Yeah, but, I mean, just suggesting, given that we rarely have a full board, if it happens.
If we have a full board, yeah.
You should consider doing it.
But you won't be here on the 4th, you said? Right, okay. But we're not going to do it tonight.
We don't have a full board.
Teresa, anything else?
Board member committee updates? No committee updates. Then I would invite public comment from anyone who's left, for the regular public comment.
Yep. Okay, so if there's anyone online who has comment or questions, now is your time, understanding that the hearing on the OSRD will be continued to our June 4th meeting. Anyone out there? Teresa's going to monitor you on the Zoom.
If so, unmute yourself and say your name and address. Going once? Going twice? No. I have a public comment.
Okay, I do apologize for missing the opportunity to allow public comment and questions, but we are continuing, from the people online. It's been a confusing night here in the room, and we will be continuing on the 4th, and there is the opportunity always to send them in by email and at your request. We can read them here even if you aren't available to attend. Go ahead, public comment.
Would you like me to go to the podium so that?
Yeah, I think so.
State your name and address.
Yes, state your name and address.
Teresa Whitman, at Lufkin Street.
Look closer to the mic, please.
My public comment is respectfully offered. I acknowledge the authority of the board and the building inspector to accept plans as presented. My public comment is that I think that the town of Essex, for projects that are on municipal land, should be held to at least the same, if not a higher standard, for the plans that are required to approve, for instance, siting of a new building or anything else. I think that any other projects that have come before the board that I've seen, site plans have been required to have setback dimensions and all manner of other things that have been discussed in great detail. And I think that for municipal projects, the town should be setting the high standard, not the minimal standard. I realize it might be an added expense, but a site plan, once done, can be easily adjusted for as-built down the line, and I think it would be beneficial for the Grove to have a site plan anyway. It surprises me a bit that we don't have a real site plan for Centennial Grove, given all of the projects going up there. So my public comment is just that as things move forward with different projects, you might consider holding the town itself to a higher standard rather than a lower. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the room or online? Any hands raising there? No, we don't have any. Okay. Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
908.